If you looked at it a little bit, when you remember we had, I don't know if y'all heard about it, was the 3% cap that they they gonna have us put on this, the government, our governor?
Yep.
Okay, so that actually worked in our favor. So if you look at, not the front sheet, the next sheet, that'll tell you the levied amounts for us, for the city, the cemetery, the library, and the airport. Okay?
Sorry, which one?
Your second sheet, this one, that's your levied amounts, good. You have a top sheet, take this off, your top, your top sheet, your very second one. Oh, that's right, you had these two, take those out for it now. Take those out for it now, I'll tell you all those in a minute. Okay, so you have this one here, shows you all your levy amounts, and what, how much we have levied against this. Okay, go to your next sheet, it's gonna show you that for the city, the general fund, we were allowed to levy 105, I have it at 104.95. Now, if you go over to the next sheet after that, that is, if you look at the sheet, it'll say 2024 actual revenues. Those are the actual figures that are in our books, that were paid out, that we got revenues, and then our, everything that's paid out, and we have in our books. Our next one for 25, from the first six months, then we have to estimate the next six months to do this budget. Now, we're estimating for the 2026, which is all estimation.
Why, why that one?
Huh?
The garbage in 24 was 36,000, it's near the bottom.
Mm-hmm, 38,000?
Or 38,000?
Mm-hmm.
And now we're down to 3700 last year, why?
What do you mean, 30?
Okay, here we're at.
Oh, 3,700, 2,000. I don't know why that went down, that, we estimated it that way. I'll look at it, but I have all the stuff. Yeah, glad you saw that.
We were still running the truck, you know?
Yeah, I, okay, so if you move over a couple more sheets to the expenditures. Alright, same thing, those are all our expenditures there, then the estimate for, the estimates, and for 2025 and 2026. If you go down to the garbage expense, I mean, in water meters, right down here, where it says water meters, you'll see I, I put in for the 20,000, that you asked me to. I guess for that, but, uh, each box of those costs about $5,000 to order a case of them. So I would say we probably should do three and hold up on the fourth one till a little while, make sure we don't get any extra things going wrong, you know, that gives us an extra 5,000. If you go down a little bit further, the other yellow highlighted one is professional fees. Okay, that's where we're, when we take down these houses and all that, that would be in there. I had it at 40,000, but in order to stay in the budget to get the 105, that 103.95, I needed to take that back down. So she said just watch, don't take down three houses, maybe I'll take down one this year. But, she told me that, we talked about the ward house there, that's not coming up till next year. They been here for three years, but technically you do, you do your taxes from the year before, so technically they don't lose it till next year. But, as of always, second, these houses all belong to the county. Okay? First name, he did pay his, so he's got his back. The second one has not come forward with anything. And the third one, he paid, but he paid for that one year that you need to, to get off of there. But she, they give you to a certain date, he paid after that date. So what happens when you pay after that date, to buy that back from the county, you gotta pay all three, all the years you're behind. I did talk to him on the phone today, and he didn't realize that, so he was gonna get that taken care of. So it looks like the county will end up with just one, unless he goes and pays, see, they got 30 days to pay. Um, so anyway, so we're not gonna have all them houses to take down this year, it's gonna be next year. Alright, if you flip over, that'll show you the cemetery, you can get two, we gave them two. The library can get four, they, we ended up giving them 3.74. Emergency, 2.5, we gave them, we gave mill levies of 2.5. The airport, you can get four, but you only got .66, and I'll tell you how to get that changed for next year.
Okay, I'm gonna ask.
I know you're going to, but we'll, we can talk privately if that one, then I'll tell you how you can get that one back up. So now we're gonna go back to these two sheets, these two sheets, our mill levies are all right here. Okay, so looking at them, and then, if we would've used, you have two different, one, two different, one, two, three different ways you can use calculations, okay, with this new cap. The first one, you really what, she said that between one and two, you wanna take the highest number one, so we, we're going with calculation, the number two, where we're allowed to do 70,000, 70,334 is what we're doing towards our mill levies. So we are getting, we're using the 3% cap instead of, we got more money, we got more mills with the 3% cap versus the regular way. So what I'm asking you here tonight is, I will send this budget over to her tonight, it's due to her tomorrow, but we still have until the 10th to change our mind. But I don't think y'all are gonna wanna change your mind on anything. So we could just take and certify it now and be done with it, and I can send her the certification. So we got all the top mills for all of them, but the airport.
Yeah, as far as houses, I think we've got it.
But see, we thought we'd get the other two, and now we're not.
Yeah.
So we were gonna need to take them down, that's why you were putting it, so I had put it at 40,000, because that, that fee pays for anybody that's doing work for us, so you can see in 2024, it was 67,000.
Yeah.
So I was putting it at 40, and she had me not get down to 27, because otherwise our mills were up at 1, 1.6 something, so we need to just get down at 105.
Yeah, we pretty much got rid of all of them. Well, there's a couple problems that they privately owned yet, so we can't touch them.
And that one you were just showing me, the garbage thing, if I, we may as well leave it, because those are all estimates anyway, because we've got this all worked out figure to the T of getting the 1.4 whatever, and that would change it tra- domestically. Cause that's not the final figures, final figures were on 2024.
Yeah.
And that'll actually help us next year, because we're hoping something else. And she did say these 3% caps, if we don't use the whole 3% cap in the first year, we have five years to use it, so we can carryover 2%, we can carryover 1%, whatever, each year until we use the 3% cap.
Oh!
Mm-hmm, it's a carryover. I'm still learning on that one, so don't ask me questions on that one, she helped me with that one. The rest I did.
What's that, do you know what that is?
What's it say?
Infrastructure, I'm gonna, so we need to be a small infrastructure.
Infrastructure, the 42,000, that is the money that we got for, um, the state, or the...
Oh, that's what they put that under?
Alright, they, they automatically deposit into our account, and then now if you go back out to the expenditures, you'll see it's done right back out, because I took it out of this account and put it in its own account.
Gotcha, okay.
So I still had to show it on here, coming in and going back out. So really, it's a zero in the, in the books there.
Okay, I was just wondering why you...
The state, no, the state will not put them in, they put it in that account, our city one.
And that's obviously separate from the Prado money, then?
That is the Prado money, isn't it? That is the Prado money.
Oh, that's a, but they haven't listed on your, okay, that's what I was...
Yeah, yeah, that is the Prado money.
Okay. This checking, I've never seen it under this, that infrastructural thing?
The Prado money is at all, it's for infrastructure, yeah.
Yeah, I guess the only question I would have would be that, um, on the trash, the garbage one.
Like I was telling you...
It's almost like it should've had an estimated...
Another zero on it.
Another zero, that's what estimated for the next six months or something, but I don't, forgot the first six or something.
Well...
I would, yeah, something like that.
At this point though, like I was telling him, those are estimated ones, so we already figured everything in, so we really don't have to have that estimating right there, it's gonna jump our thing up way too high. When we were at 1.67, and in order to get it down to 105, you gotta start taking something out.
You know, if we do have it custom picked up, you know, that number maybe would be somewhat close.
Well, the ones you really can't change when you do a budget is this 2024 right here, this first line. Those are actual, so these other ones are really not a big deal, you know?
So all it would be, would be moving money around?
Right, yeah.
But actually...
So next year, when I put 2025 here, it'll be the actual amount that's showing there, cause every year it changes.
The part I was questioning was the 24 actual, or 25 estimated.
Right, but see, they're still, the estimated and estimated, you're okay, you, you can go way up high, you can go way down low, whatever, to make you, to meet your mills. But the one thing you can't mess with is the actual revenues, which is always gonna be your first row. That comes right out of book of what we paid and what we collected. Everything else is an estimation.
But you know, the actual for 24 sounds very realistic, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, 24 is done over with, I did that one.
You know, we're running about 300.
So we just can't change that, so what, yeah, that's what...
So next year it'll change the factual number.
Well, I know, but I'm saying we're trying to estimate to get money, but it doesn't matter if we put it under the garbage, then we're gonna drop something else lower, that's what you're telling me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we can't change this?
We don't want to right now.
The bottom, that's 99 whatever.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna touch that right now, because we were at, when it was up higher, we were at 1, 1.67, and we had to ride it down to 105 to get no levies.
I'll give it a go.
Okay.
Any other questions for us?
Move to approve the budget as presented.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that means y'all are not gonna wanna take it up, I can go ahead and center this tonight, and then tomorrow, send the certification papers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll turn on my phones.
Motion to adjourn the first annual budget meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned at 7:12 PM. We'll call our next, Gackel City Council Meeting, Monday, October 6, 2025, at 7:13 PM. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance right away, and then, uh, go through...
Flag, I mean, to which it stands.
Everyone who saw the minutes from our previous meeting, any corrections or additions to that?
Move to approve.
Okay.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything to add on tonight's agenda, for anybody? I didn't even look, sorry, I didn't have a chance to. Okay, take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second?
All second.
All in favor? Okay, no whizzers tonight. Bill, he's not coming.
Bill was coming, but he thought he thought this meeting was, the first meeting was gonna go longer, cause he asked me, do we do the budget first?
Okay.
So, so I'll pull in any time.
Okay, I don't know if he was going to the council or not.
I'm sure that's where he's at.
Alright, then we'll go to the auditor. Circle back to Bill if he's got anything.
Um, I don't have anything. Oh, yeah, I do, okay, the letters are going out for the lead pipe, lead ones, or need to be out by November 1st, so I got this done, the garbage done, I'll, I'm working on those, and then the street assessments and the certification of anybody that's back due, it's also due November 1st, so those two done next.
Okay.
Okay. That's it.
Alright, Grant's not here, he didn't have anything from us tonight either. Jeff, I didn't see anything about, I guess I didn't, I haven't driven around for a while, looked for our streetlights and everything, or, is there one out, I should ask that? Or did you take something down by the new pickleball court, or the shack down there in that park? Cause I heard they were setting up some kind of lights to try and light that up better at night, themselves, but, or someone did it. Cause I didn't know if there was a streetlight actually out, I don't know if you guys have noticed, or if there just wasn't one there ever? Well, I'll check that out, I'll make a...
And I know we just connected the light at the, um, care center.
Okay.
So we should be dropping, I said, I think we have what, 34 of what it is, streetlights, so that should be all, getting off the list.
Okay.
They chose not to have it anymore.
Okay. Is that, are we supposed to have like a contract for those or anything, like we need a minimum, or? Does it matter, we can just drop them?
I think we could drop them.
Okay, I'm just curious. Uh, Larry, you got anything? Uh, Lauren?
Nope.
Alright, old business, do we got anything to discuss on old business that you guys are aware of? Gaming permits all done, raffle, heard that went good for the duck fest. Okay, we'll move into new business then. Uh, first, we'll do the permit for Ray and Pister, repairs on house?
There's, there's two of them, Ray and John, Jason and all.
I don't know, I'm not familiar with that.
They live in the house right across the street from where Terry Griffiths used to live.
Oh, that's their name, okay.
Pister, all of them over there are named Pister.
Okay, I didn't know that, okay.
Is that the Lunsman House?
Yeah, the one right across the street from where it used to be.
Oh, that's the house, Melvin Miller's?
Melvin Miller's, yes. And then the daughter lives here, and the son lives in Terry's.
Yes, did they buy that other property, I see that's getting cleaned up, and there's campers sitting there?
No, that camper and stuff belongs to those boys. He had it on the road, and I drove past, and they were down here visiting and paying his bill. So I stopped, and I said, if you do realize this camper's gotta be moved, you are on the road in snow removals, so make sure you're, so they were moving it.
It almost looked like they cleaned up branches and mowed or something, I don't know.
I think now, I told, uh, no, cause I said to him, I also said, we probably gonna be mowing this year shortly, so they might've came and mowed it too before they left.
I was kinda hoping those Pisters bought that, because they've done a hell of a job, everything they bought so far. Geez, they do a nice job and quick. Okay, I was just curious, cause it looked a lot better over there, I know the camper, the vehicles, I'm not 100% with, but at least they're cleaned up some, I guess, but...
I move to approve, approve the building permits.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that was for Pister and Jason Miller Windows, is that it?
Right.
Okay, um, and then, uh, lift station, uh, that Jeff shot, I think you had put that on, Karen, Lauren?
Yep, what it is, there's a lift station that actually, I guess the city owns it. We're paying the power going to that lift station. It's in the alley behind, uh, oh, like John LeBrandt.
Okay.
And Jeff's been struggling, and we've been struggling with that every year, it freezes.
Yeah.
And what it is, Bill and I were down there, we dug with the shovel, I was gonna use the hole, but hell, that pipe was only buried about six inches deep. And we don't know, we went out about 25 feet, and it's still maybe about eight inches deep, it's no wonder it freezes. What Bill, what my suggestion is, um, the other thing is that the city has a lot, 50 feet between that yellow house, and then Dwight Wees is about 50 feet. And actually, that pipe, I think, the way it appears, runs over on Dwight's property. What Bill and I talked, would make a lot more sense to move that manhole over here, and we located a curb stop here, and just feed it into this sewer system. This is a vacant lot, it used, I call it the Schmier lot, cause there used to be a house sitting in here.
Okay. So that's, so when you say lift station, now that's for the sewage?
Sewage.
Okay, but it's the water line also, is that?
No.
Or I'm confused on the water line, I guess, sorry?
You know, I don't know how Jeff gets his water.
Why would you put a curb stop in?
Well, see, that's from the existing, from the Schmier house?
Yeah, so you're saying there's a sewer lines?
There's a sewer line there, and a curb stop that used to feed that Schmier house.
Okay, okay.
And that house is the one that Mike Martin lives in, that got moved.
Okay.
It got picked up from here and moved down to Mike Martin's. And then, there was a BIS house sitting here, and there's also a curb stop right here. And I'm assuming they tied into the sewer line.
So is this something that we're gonna have to get done before winter, now?
Well, what, um, Bill talked to Vaughn, or rather, I think really Travis, on Friday or Saturday.
Okay.
And they were gonna look at it, come up with an estimate. Uh, the worst case scenario, if we can't do it this year, in the past, we've trained, we've grown.
Okay, yeah, I guess look and see what we can do this year yet. I'm all in for it, I favor it, yeah, it makes sense if it's only eight cents below the surface, so...
And Dwight told me, we talked to Dwight that day when we, Bill was there with the metal detector, and that's how we found that curb stop.
Okay.
And, um, to get an idea of what the hell's really going on here on these two lots. And, um, then we, Dwight came out and asked what we're doing, and really nice, I mean, not mad or anything. And Twyla mows all this city property. And she said she doesn't have a problem, she'll continue to mow it, but the only thing, if we dig here, she asked if we would just smooth it out good.
Right.
Well, that's not unreasonable.
Right, yeah.
And Dwight said, when this was put in, um, I guess Trevy Wees was the mayor, and he wanted to bury it deeper, and Claydys said, no, it'll work, it'll work, it'll work, it doesn't...
So this basically comes, this is where they park the camper all the time here?
Yep.
And then that's their lot, and the city's got you, okay? So what kind of, what are you thinking, like 300 feet, 500 feet, what do you, roughly?
Well...
Is it a lot longer than I realized?
I would say maybe 200.
Oh, that's...
Because here would be the alley, and there's kind of a high spot here, and Jeff's line coming from his house is damn near over here.
Okay.
So we just have to dig a little bit here, get it in there, and then this one is sitting on a hump. And that's what Bill and I talked about, the first thing we'd have to do is dig down here, and find out the depth to get an elevation.
Yeah.
And when I stand here, it looks pretty level all the way over here, but there's a low spot in here.
Okay.
And what I said, it isn't that big an area, if we have to, if it wants to get kind of shallow on us, we'll just haul it and fill it in.
And our property goes all the way to the alley, so we don't have to worry about anybody?
Right.
Perfect. Okay, alright, yeah?
That's what I'm good to me.
See what we can do this year, and hopefully we can get something done for them. Is that where all those trees are at still, or is that further?
That's further south.
You and I were back there one time checking out something, I can't remember, over that...
Yeah, that's a little further south.
That's when we were having trouble with all of our, um...
That's that storm drain.
Right on, storm drain.
Storm drain, that was cold, yeah, cold, that fell in, it was, yeah.
We gotta do something, hopefully.
Yeah, it's, it's been an issue for...
Yeah, I, I feel bad for him, I hate sewer trouble, so I think, let's get it done for him. It's our responsibility, so... Okay, anything else on that then, Lauren?
No, I think that's it.
Just keep us informed on that?
Well, yes.
Uh, garbage.
They were here today, and we talked to the driver, Bill and I were both. And we looked at Carol Miller's, and there was a couple trees that needed trimming so he can get in there. And he thought he could get in without, but I told Bill, you take the bucket truck, go down and cut them, you know, trim them down, just for safety sake. And, um, and then Bill, his, the math he was given on Friday, I could see where he's not familiar with Gackel, and he was totally confused. And, um, so Bill kinda rode with him today, and I think it'll, I'd say come out. The other thing is, some towns, I think you mentioned Ellendale, you're required, and everybody, every homeowner, no less, is notified which side of the street he puts his garbage can, or their garbage can. That way, he only has to go on that street one time. He said some places it isn't gonna work.
Yeah, I don't like that.
But then, we look like by your in-laws, by growths, the only one that has a garbage can on the north side is Brian Huff, or Huff, whatever, but Brian. So he could, if he had it on the south side, then there is garbage, you know, he could only have to go that...
Marilyn, Marilyn Anzinger's on that side.
Well, that would be a block up.
Oh, okay.
Then he could plant his route where he can...
I, I don't, yeah, I, I wish you would've told us something like that, cause I don't agree with that at all, especially coming winter. We're gonna expect these people to wheel their trash across the street, and you know how winters are in North Dakota, we have shit blowing, trash is blowing, I don't know. I don't know if I need to talk to them again about that, or what, but, I just don't think it's fair to those residents that gotta push them across the street. I know it's not a huge deal to some of us, but it is for...
Well, the older ones, cause Patty and Marilyn, I take their trash can, can out for them, and I bring it back in for them, cause it's too much for them.
And there's some, yeah.
Yeah.
And he was, and maybe we shouldn't even go there for now.
See what they try and say.
Let them establish their route, because Wednesday, either Bill or Tom are gonna ride with them. And I think the other factor was B, they had trucks.
Yeah, backed up anyway, and...
Backed up, and he did cull them, I think that same day, so he was getting us...
So we're, we're gonna get our trash picked up on Thursday, or Wednesday afternoon, is that what the original? I'm not sure what our exact time is, I think they're in Ellendale first, and then here, but I don't know if that was just cause today, or everything got screwed up, and I called them on Saturday, Sunday, and today...
I thought cull them was first.
That's what, I don't know if they do Ellendale normally on Mondays, and they were just shooting back from there, cause I had been on his ass since Saturday.
I'm sure, yeah.
Because we had all these missed.
Right.
So I think they just made, it came from Ellendale, picked up what they missed, so...
Yeah, I, and I just don't understand how they just have a map, when I've talked to Ralph, he said they got everything in the GPS, and they know exactly what he's picked, and what he didn't, and where he's at, and...
So I'm confused, how they would just have a map? How they would just have a map.
He had a map, and I can see where that map, it wasn't very clear.
Well, on a Friday night too, I'm sure he's had a long week.
Yeah.
Whoops.
And he's fairly, fairly new driver.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, hopefully they get it straightened out here, because.
I, yeah, I would say give them a couple weeks and then see what happens, see if they get their shit together.
And I agree, I think like Bill or Tom should, because he didn't even know where Dakota Valley was at. And then Bill met him up and took, you know, showed him.
Yeah. Boy, that surprised me, because I have to give him all the exact addresses, and he puts them in the computer, and that's supposed to be sent to the truck, as far as I was understanding, but apparently not. Of course, maybe it is to the truck, and all he has is a screen with addresses, so he needs the map, that I understand, but.
And maybe they had a different truck than normal, or?
I know he had to rent one from mine, not he said.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
That could be another issue, maybe. That truck didn't have their.
Okay. Yeah, so hopefully, because I had him drive around today too, I'm assuming you said Bill went with him, right? Because there was like, where are we at here, sir? There's one right here that was missed, possibly two or three, there's another one down, and the whole street there, all Third Avenue West. Yeah, there's another one on east side of town, but I just wanted to make sure he just drove around sporadically and checked them all too, because anything that was sitting on the street, I said, you should probably check. I know there's some out there that didn't get put away, but.
And what are we gonna do with these hunters, these, I'm thinking like those people, forget their name, across from where we tore the hardware store down? You know, they call, because, you know, they come on Fridays, leave on Sundays. How are we gonna treat those, you know, they, they don't want their garbage cans sitting out on the street.
What'd they do before on Thursdays? And I suppose just threw their actual trash bags on the ground.
They put trash bags out. A lot of them built those things for their cans. I know all the Airbnbs that I do, I take care of them myself. I'll go put them out, throw them away.
I think we should just notify them, or if they ask, they're just gonna have to find someone to do it. I mean, we can try and help them out for a little bit, because it's, I mean, it's our decision what we did here, but they're just gonna have to find someone to do it, I guess, because we can't, or if they only have a little bit of trash, maybe there's someone to tell them, you know, they could throw up theirs for now. Or take their can over to that place.
Not that way, you can't do it that way, I don't think. You need, that's what you can find out. If you're, that house, he has that house number with one can.
Yeah.
So now all of a sudden, you put another can there, he's gonna charge you for the one can plus one.
Well, that's true, but I, just visiting with him as much as I have here, I, if we would tell him this hunter's leaves this and explain the situation, he can change that. He would still bill us the full amount instead of the extra ten, but know that there's two there. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's, I don't think it has to be as cut and dry, as long as we let him know the situation's here, but.
Well, how many week, how many weeks do they come down? Because that only have to be a few weeks of the year.
Um, hunting, it started this weekend, and I have people all the way until November fourteenth.
But he just means like these guys.
Oh.
Yeah. So the other eight months of the year, you wouldn't really have to worry about, or nine months.
Just when he comes.
You just gotta figure out something for these two, three months.
Well, Otis Sayers aren't allowed to hunt, but one, doesn't it one week? They changed it this year. It used to be two weeks, now I think it, I think.
I, I, I'm not, he's a very nice guy, I just.
He is a very nice guy.
He's just gonna have to find someone to pour his trash back in for him, is what it comes down to.
You know what, I think I'll call them and just tell them, if nothing else, I'll help them out for a while and just see how it works out. Because another thing that we should maybe do is try to notify the people to take their old garbage cans and take them away, you know, like Mike Asher's got his sitting there. Uh, that should actually be taken away, because he said he's in some cases picked up on unapproved cans.
I could see it, especially with it getting dark here sooner and sooner than.
Yeah. So I think we should try to get the word out that take your old garbage, and I know some people have already, they're gone.
I think so.
And just get, you know, there's no reason they had them out there.
Yeah, well, this week didn't go so good, but hopefully it gets, what do we, I was hoping the rest of the council too, and Bill is here, because I wanna know and get it locked down, and so that everybody knows that we can address it next meeting too. What we're gonna do for steps, as far as if people have trouble, are they supposed to call that code sanitation number? Because that's, I didn't, we didn't get one of those little welcome package things, or, I don't know if you guys did, you supposedly brought them back down the next day.
It was one sheet and a plastic liner, that, oh, it wasn't.
Did you, I didn't get one, so.
It was just a sketch.
It didn't say anything about numbers to call or who, because it's, we gotta know this moving.
This is, this is the page everybody got. The only print, print a little note for you to take home to your wife.
Yeah, I got one of them stuck in the lid.
So everyone got at least a number there. Because like today, so I'm just bringing this up, because I didn't realize that they came Friday night and missed so many garbages until Saturday afternoon. And then Sunday morning, I went around and was checking, thinking it was only a couple, and ended up, we should have it too, where these, if they're supposed to call this number, or Bill, or Larry, there's gotta be some steps that they're aware of, because I didn't know this, that there was twenty, thirty of them missed, you know, until Sunday morning.
You know, maybe the best, like Larry, that's actually your department.
Well, I know, and that's why I'm bringing it up too, because we don't, I don't think we want Bill just to wash his hands of all this, that he's gotta have some responsibility, and he has something he can't handle, then it goes to Larry, because Larry's, it's his department, right? I think he should be getting every single little thing to bring to the meeting.
Well, everybody, Bill, call Bill, you know, he could be the first one. I can, you know, be the second, but I don't know how many people know that I'm in charge of garbage.
Okay, well, I just wanna know so they can get it out there when people ask, because it's, if it's, we'll call this three-two-o number.
Yeah, they don't answer all the time. Three-two-o number doesn't answer a whole lot. She'll call you back.
Right. And I just think that's the fair thing to do, if it's something they missed, the garbage, or if they screwed something up, or did some, I mean, these are the guys they should contact first. And then Bill, if it's something Bill can't handle, then Larry, is that what we're thinking, or so that it's out there, it's on camera?
I guess what I was thinking, if they call Larry, if they're doing work though, it's not.
Well.
That's the hell of it too.
That is, that's only gonna be until December.
And then you get unnecessary complaints.
Well.
I just feel that there's gonna be ninety percent of them that can be a quick trip over there from Bill to pick up the, or.
Yeah.
See what happened, if they broke it, or need to be replaced, or something like that, that's something I think that's very easily handled on his time, myself, but. It shouldn't be coming to the, a councilman over a broken garbage can, or.
You know, that's true, maybe it should be Bill, and then he, Bill should keep track and get back to you with it.
If it's something else, other than something simple like that, well, then we'll address it accordingly.
Because I see one problem, boy, on a windy day.
Oh, yeah.
Those lids not stay closed, they don't stay closed, and they're blowing, the cans and all are rolling down the street. I don't know how to solve that.
I don't, still says, her can't, it, if there's a little puff of wind, it's weighing on the side.
I forgot hers too. I better put that down. I'm glad you said that. You told me about that last?
Yeah, I told her, you could put a rock in there, but then you gotta put a rock in every time you do that, because.
I'll see if he can just pull into her house, just like Carol's over here.
Yeah.
It's only one house there, so you can easily spin around in there.
And get more of a windbreak, so it doesn't get blown.
Yeah, because that's not fair to her to have hers out on forty-six like that.
What about Jeff Shaw? That's another one. And the bad thing is, if it's south wind, it's gonna be out on the state highway.
Oh, yeah.
So he's, I would just, I'll have to let them know that we just can't have garbage cans that close to forty-six, there's this. It's.
Yeah.
Even the draft from the semis flying by.
Boy, I'll, I'll take it too.
And I could see some of these guys that are thinking, gonna think it's pretty goddamn funny when they fly by at forty-five and trash goes flying.
But see how far we can make it fly this time.
Who in the house is gonna go down in four-foot snow-covered ditch and get all that out of it? I don't know.
I think those are the only three, then, boy, I, I just overheard. He mentioned something about Sharon Schulten, or something about turning in there, and I'm not sure what that was about.
Well, hers I could see being tough.
Well, yeah, that's.
Why couldn't they go up that other driveway and go to George's first and then come down? The driveway right next to it, pull up?
I wonder how they did it before.
Well, maybe he would have to, because, no. Because then the pickup would be on the, it's on the passenger side of the truck, the arm. So he's gotta, you know.
Yeah, George is never gonna be able to do that.
So they want theirs out on the actual physical street too? I didn't, I guess I didn't.
Boy, I don't know.
Because how much room does she have alongside the house, that road going, like, it's pretty narrow.
That's narrow.
Yeah, that's not a very good road, I don't think. I don't think it, that's probably asking for trouble driving in there.
Maybe we should touch base, I don't know what the discussion was, I didn't hear the whole thing. But he mentioned it. Because when they were looking at the map.
And you got two George and her, neither one of them can pull them all the way down to the street.
I don't, yeah, I just don't expect them to, that's just not fair to them to.
No.
Say, I, I have to help now, but let's learn how to handle it.
Well, it's, questions we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to dress and see where Sharon was putting them, I guess, I don't know, or where they had her. Because if they went and told Carol what their plan was, which I'm glad we got that one fixed too, they must've told Sharon or George what their plan was and where they needed to be, because Ralph must've came around and did it himself, from what I understand. From his conversation this morning, I guess.
Okay.
Because he said he had talked to Carol, and they were gonna go get her garbage and bring it down and then take it back up for him. Means there was just a couple of branches.
Yeah, it wasn't much.
So we better figure out for those two also, but I think forty-six, I don't even know if that's legal to have that, we don't want him stopped on that goddamn road anyway. There's some trucks that could see it very good.
And maybe he oughta visit with Jeff, because maybe Jeff don't want him on his pavement either.
Right, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Payment ain't the best, maybe Jeff pulls on, there was heavy, so.
Okay.
That big water hole parked in there for how long?
But I think it's down to work, it'll work. It's just a matter of, we gotta, we'll just light it up.
Okay. Anything, anything else on that, guys?
Well, I got one thing. Have, have you gotten, has somebody with the last name Brown been calling you about picking up garbage out on thirty-four? Bill said he's talked to her a couple times. She, she called Co-op, and of course Theresa handed me the phone. And she wants to know if the new garbage people would pick up garbage out on Harley thirty-four. And I told her, and I don't want it, and, and she goes, I don't want every week, I'll just leave a dumpster out there and then they can pick it up, I says, I can relay the message, but I'm pretty sure the answer's gonna be no.
You might, I would have her just call that Ralph.
But I, I told her, and, and I will probably give you a number, and you're gonna have to call them, because we aren't gonna have anything to do with it.
That would be anything to do with us, but I did see there is some actual ninety-six gallon totes along Highway thirty right now. So maybe they do stop and grab some of that, or if that's a different company, I don't know. Maybe that's the one that Haley Zinker gave us the number for in Bismarck there, but I do see there's two or three along that.
Because I guess there's a guy out of Steel. Who wants garbage, because Rick Schultz told me this morning, uh, he picks up, uh, Lake Williams area.
Oh, gotcha.
And Steel.
Would be Mel Stroll's brother, Strom.
Yeah. So maybe one of them come down and has totally set, but I guess it's for her to find out, not us, because that's not to do with the city.
They took her number, but I didn't put a whole lot of.
I haven't found one on my machine yet, so, and she mustn't come here, because my cell phone number's on the door.
Bill said he's talked to her. For the same thing, you know, totally the same thing, so.
Oh, I guess on that subject, before I forget too. Um, did we figure anything out as far as, we had a couple of the business owners wondering about what we were gonna do with cardboard, if we were gonna set up a dumpster for that? You think it's something we should try? See how it goes?
Recycling, things.
You know, we got extra dumpster, dumpsters. Uh, we could move inside that building down there.
Be a good way to kind of hold it, I guess.
Yeah, because outside, I'm afraid, plus if they get wet, then.
Yeah.
Is that something?
Maybe you could ask Ralph, you know, how, I don't know if we could take it up there then if they.
Uh, he's just gonna charge us just like a dumpster. We've already asked him about that, because remember recycling is way too expensive, and think about, unless it was mandatory by the city. So that would kind of be our own baby, we did that, which I'm not opposed to, once every four months, three months, whatever, running a truck up and to help everybody out on that, but.
But they have to bring theirs down to there.
And they're aware of that, yeah, we can't just have dumpsters sitting all over, it's gonna be a free-for-all.
Yeah.
But I just said I would bring it up.
Yeah, I was thinking that we could use the truck, put the cardboard right in that dump truck, garbage truck.
But just so they would put it in the dumpsters and we would just dump that into there when they're full? Is that what you're thinking? Or just dump it right into the damn truck?
Yeah, I don't know how they dump up there, you know, if he could. How he handles the cardboard, you know, if we could just open the back gate and dump it out, or?
Right.
I have no idea.
Okay, I think we should try and help them a little bit, I guess, if we could, maybe say we gotta run the truck once every three months, four months. Okay, and then the other questions I had is what we're actually gonna be charging per month. But I think it's best if we wait and get a first bill before we.
Get a handle.
Because there's a lot of hidden shit that's coming out right now that we're told about. Pickups over here and across the street, and I just wanna see what's, what a bill is, but what I've been telling them is is what we put in that letter, it shouldn't be over five or six dollars more than you're paying, also twenty dollars at most, I would think, somewhere in there. So I don't think they're too far off, but just so we don't get a bunch of surprises.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we could have the other guys here too before we, okay. Anything else on garbage, guys? Good?
No.
I'll be glad when this is well-oiled machine, I mean. All right, uh, contracts for swinging controls, I, you, Larry, you were here when you was explaining for the water tower.
Oh, yeah.
To shut that off down there, I, I say we make a motion to approve the swinging controls estimate here for.
What was it?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred, and there's another eighty-three forty, I don't know if that's in there.
What's that?
Replacement pressure transducer.
Oh. I think, we didn't know.
I didn't read that first part.
If that worked or not, the one that's there.
So that's, that's a maybe then, that actually, I say we approve that, though, and take a motion for that for sixteen hundred.
I can make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like I said, I didn't get any information from Daniel, email or text in the last two to three weeks, I don't know.
He, he sent me this.
That sounds, so, what is he talking about?
Well, if it's what I think it is, this goes back maybe ten years ago, they were really pushing it. The state, there was some grant money available, but I know, and I don't remember who was on the council with me, our share would've been. Our share would have been about a hundred thousand dollars. Cause they to get approved, you gotta do. New street lights. They got these fancy ones, you know, these decorative type. I forget some of the other. It was beautification of Main Street.
That wasn't too long ago when we had something like that just come through again. And maybe that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wants to he wants to explain it all and get in his agenda. Then he wants to get a presentation and ultimately look for a motion for each city confirming they will participate.
But he doesn't have what it's actually about?
And it's about this Ramisans zone.
Maybe I'll just look it up once and see what if Lauren's right or not.
I'll give you this and that way you can look at it.
There's something joint between the state highway.
It tells you more on the on the September email that he sent me. Then he then he sent me this one changing the date.
Well, can I keep this then?
Yes, you can.
I'll just look it up and. Can't be too hard to find online.
Yeah.
Okay. See if it's anywhere. If it's something that was mostly the interest in, I can give you guys a call or just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And I think it was in the city scan. Maybe two there was articles about. Some town participated, but.
Okay.
Uh wasn't an important thing.
Do you need that? Well, I know a hundred thousand dollars is not gonna happen to beautify it. Street lights at that twist.
What bothered me was that that was kinda the council back when. If it's if it is that, we had just done the sidewalks some years earlier.
Oh, sure.
We'd have to rip up all the sidewalks. You know, hurry like any of. And for the standards or for those light poles to mount on. It was ridiculous. Then they got flower planters, you know, that fit onto those and.
Kinda like when you go down, if you ever gone gone down Main Street or more.
I think they would have.
Yeah, that's yeah, that's all the big lights and planters and all the way down the street.
Okay. Okay. Well, I know you guys looked at the bills already. We were talking about that before.
On the bills, I forgot to tell you that. On the bills, you'll see a total of deposits. And then you'll see where it wrote in. I wrote in another six thousand something and then twenty-nine. Our drafts come out on the last day of the month, which is the thirtieth. And the lady over in Hunter, she accidentally put October first. So technically, that first amount is what I was depositing. But I want you guys to see that technically we were supposed to have that other six thousand in this month. So that when you're looking at the bills and the. The bills and the deposits, you like to see that we're not losing money. You know what I mean?
Yep.
So I added that just so you can see. It 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 went in on October first. So it's gonna show up next month in the deposits.
Who's junk man and son?
The guy that cleaned out the his yard and I will be turning that in November first to taxes.
Okay. Well, that might be a yearly. Three years.
Did you see?
I said that might be a yearly amount for the next three. Now I need to keep my mouth shut.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Okay, uh any questions on that? We got the Melissa Tackett thing done. That was. Good to see that got cleared up finally, so, okay.
Move to approve the bills.
Uh second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh date and time, November third. I apologize. I should have moved this meeting tonight so Grant could make it and Bill could make it. But I hopefully those guys will.
I don't know. Did we have any choice because?
We had no choice. We had to have it tonight. Well, we could have tomorrow night. Because see, this paperwork has to be through October seventh. And I know there's two other ones in town doing their meetings. Tonight, tomorrow night.
I just gotta make a habit of asking my wife what we got going on that day.
No, actually, actually Drew, there's usually all school concerts are Tuesday nights and Thursday nights, so I never thought about it.
Cause I always miss golf.
Yes, it's two seasons Thursdays. So I when I did it on Monday.
Oh, I suppose they combined them together, so, okay. But you guys don't know of anything November third?
Should work.
Okay, seven P M?
Yep.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Seven, all in favor?
Aye.
What time is it?
It is seven fifty-four. You didn't get paid for a special meeting there, auditor lady?
You get paid for a special meeting?
Not what you're supposed to.
Well, if y'all would if y'all really looked, I could show you what the other councils make, but y'all wanna keep it under the six hundred.
That's out the window anyway. I don't really care.
You're actually the cheapest council there is.
We're probably the worst too, so we'll just keep it the lowest. Can't expect too much out of the lowest paid council in the state. And I'm short, so.
Oh, you know, and you guys have gotta remember, um.
Yeah. We're in turn million going up.
They went quicker than they thought. Um you gotta remember and next year is uh election time and we have. The mayor, the reelect. The judge to reelect and two people on the council. I can't, I gotta look it up. She just reminded me that.
Twenty-three, I think.
Huh? No, it's two, two and two.
Oh, don't start your stuff. We're not there.
Oh, no, I know what you're saying. No, no, no.
You guys are really good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
We can go over if you got some stuff.
Yeah, I got some stuff I gotta go over.
We already did the swing control. I sent that to me, so they seen that. Yep, and they approved it.
We approved that, that's. This is our blue tank cell phone. I cleaned. Let's just pick this. I have a. It's on this D card, but the U S B port you have in your computer, they took it over.
The meeting's over.
Meeting's over.
It is.
It is, yeah. Okay, just adjourn.
I mean, you can only take that U S B port home and look at it to your computer. I haven't looked at it yet, no, I don't. You talked about Jeff's shop, huh?
Yep.
Yep.
Why don't we get a have Lon look at it and kind of roughly. Get an idea on what the cost would be and. I think we kind of felt that if we can do it, let's do it. If not. Maybe we'll bank snow on top of that pipe and hope for the best. Don't have to really watch it.
Um my water tower got cleaned here last Tuesday. This is orange pink chip off the tower. There's three spots up there actually. I did have him put a coat of primer on the bare spot up there. At least there is primer on it.
Right. So these guys are underwater doing this shit?
Yeah.
Putting this cool gear in that little tank?
Oh, I guess not that little.
That's gotta be cold.
Cold?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
They wear wet suits, I think.
Good for them. I don't think I could do that. Too confined for me.
Yeah, that's a little freaky.
My company of putting together an estimate to fix. You know, that bit on top, there's a couple of pieces of hardware that's missing.
Oh, okay.
I can't blow off or nothing. It's all that's all coming in and then that corrosion on that pipe.
Yep.
Let me fix that and then some other back job. I mean, nothing's leaking yet, so I just pulled him to give me an estimate just to make sure that company will blow off.
Right, yeah, just a case.
Um. We got the hundred or we got the hundred and forty-five meters installed. I have one left. Do you want me to order more?
We just just approved. We approved that, but do we need to hold off a little bit on that still?
I mean, I do have a lot of we could do or next month or whatever.
Sherry?
What?
Did we say we needed to hold off for something else before we ordered those meters or go ahead and do that? I thought there was something else we might have needed.
You will have enough to order four cases, but let's just do three right now.
Yeah.
Three cases.
And that money wasn't that's what we wanted.
That's gonna be for the budget, yeah.
But that doesn't mean we actually get that alone either, but. Yeah. But that was money we set aside.
That would be for after the first one, not for the last.
That's what I mean. We're not guaranteed just cause we could tell them that, you know, so. You don't want me to order three of them right now, maybe. I don't think so. We gotta make sure we get that.
Not until it's approved.
It's cold.
Right.
Does she tell you what percentage we got last year?
Of that?
Cause if we put in a hundred and four thousand, doesn't mean we're getting a hundred and four thousand.
A hu- a hundred, no, what it is is a hundred and four mils.
No, but I mean like, just saying hypothetically, if we put in twenty thousand dollars for meters, doesn't mean we're getting that twenty thousand dollars. But she didn't say what kind of percentage we got last year on what we asked for?
Cause we've got that money.
We got, we what you're making the budget? It doesn't mean they don't disapprove it or whatever. What you're doing is your mills they approve of. Other money that they're the state's giving you.
But just like we're estimating, they're estimating.
They're estimating too, so.
If they don't get all that.
It won't be in the grant for this twenty twenty-six won't show up on the actuals for two more years.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Cause last year we did ten thousand. And we ordered two boxes, right? Cause I think I paid out about eight thousand dollars. Nine thousand.
But what did you get back? To replace that as well?
That came out very early, didn't it?
That's our own money. We're budgeting our own money. They don't take that money.
So when we get state or taxes from the county and everything, that's why we're doing this from the state?
Yeah, but. I don't.
Well, it's not. I guess let's just hold off. I ordered four of them or three of them, I guess.
Yeah, we were paying with meters on and the fairy dog, right?
Um not this last time. We paid the last two boxes out of our money. Where they, well, I thought they couldn't have. Can the fairy dog have uh meters on there? I think we're out of fairy dog money.
Well, the fairy dog, hold on. Wouldn't that be interesting?
So I guess if we can get by with just that one for now, I guess, just hold off, cause. We ain't got one anywhere else yet.
I got two actually. There's one over there.
Every time we've done it, it's only there.
Oh, I'll give you the code. Just go on and do it after.
Um I wanted the branches that Sarah wants. She or that George.
Yeah.
Cut all them trees down back there, all them branches.
Just beautifying gackel, you know, I heard, yeah.
I don't know if we can send her a letter to get them cleaned up or.
We should kill them there.
Plus her grass is about like that again. Clean up the branches.
We can send her a letter and I guarantee you nothing's gonna happen.
Yeah.
We're gonna end up going and doing it, but.
No phone number for her?
Who?
Sarah Ward?
Nope. She lives in Jamesstown. They live in Jamesstown. They record a lot.
And I guess.
Okay, yes, we did pay uh for meters out of fairy dog.
Uh I don't know if it was on the budget this month or not, but last month I did order. Ten gallons of this good quality material.
Okay.
So. And I asked the guy if I would carry it over the winter. He said it shows only it's not frozen.
Okay.
So we still put it out there and then. The other one branches would be. What is it? Two oh nine? Second Avenue, Richie's, next to Richie's old house, just south of Richie's old.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And branches. They've been there since the ice storm.
Yeah. Who owns that house?
I haven't known any of them.
It would be his kid with it.
It no, his kid.
His kid owns one on the corner.
Okay. He's related to him, but it's like Richie's cousin or something like that. So it'd be his uncle or second cousin.
Definitely father, aren't they?
Yeah, he knows him. I mean, we could probably could probably. Give Cody a call and have him talk to him about him.
And then I guess last thing I got is I ordered more enzymes for the sewer and I ordered enzyme block from your honey. Um. I was gonna try to talk to Jeff a little bit. I don't know if they can put some sort of screen of some kind. On that out there, cause it's there's four or five inches of.
B I Bs.
Oh, sure.
And then and then all that wax too.
It's not a waterfall out there to get that water to keep moving and mix them enzymes up to break that stuff down. So last year or the year before, we had Gravers kind of pumping out.
So what is this is a lift station you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I'd be a little worried about it if that wax is getting into the sewer system. It starts building up in the sewer pipe.
Worried about that either.
You know, maybe it would be best to say I'm grave or suck it out.
I think so too.
I think I can talk to Jeff too and see when he's done or if that any stuff over there and on.
Yep. They are. They finished, but they're cleaning now, so there probably could still be a lot of crap coming.
I'm all for having him suck it out and run through our sewer system like you said. That could be bad.
Okay. I don't really know what to do there. Ordered three buckets of that. It is a winter blend. That's just a higher concentration of enzymes, being we can't, it's hard to get out to the closer to the lift station. But we're going over here by Tim's house and then. And it'll go out there eventually. And that's what them are for. And then I did order a bucket of grease enzymes and that'll help break down. The grease that's in the pipe and in the lift stations.
Okay.
It's just it'll break down that stuff out there very good. And then there's a bucket of summer blend that I got too. That's just a little bit less than what the winter blend has. The winter blend, that'll last us two winters. Summer blend, that'll last us a winter. I would say grease plugs at least two years. And then that enzyme block, that's probably four years or more out there.
Okay.
And I think that's all I got.
You know, maybe we should hold up with the water meters for a little bit. Till we get a price from D walls on that lift station. Cause I I would guess we could use infrastructure or uh fairy dog money. For that lift for that lift.
We also just got that other nine thousand dollars from for a different infrastructure that or F C. The Flex T C or whatever F C with it. So there's about nine thousand there for that.
So why don't we just hold up with a little bit?
Yeah, cause we have the water tower too.
Yeah.
Gonna be coming up for. Doing something on the inside of there.
Okay. Better not make any decisions for monetary any way we're adjourned, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. You guys have a contract then I can control this one or is it like, you wanna keep it or?
No, I thought I did. Oh, shit.
I kept mine cause I gotta pay the bills.
That's your stuff.
I can control this one, man.
Well, you might. Do you have a thing for are you contract? I mean, you might wanna put that in your work for contract so you can go actually if you had to. And the reelection would be Larry and Jeff. Mayor and judge. At twenty twenty-four, Grant came in for four years and Lauren came in for four years.
I'm gonna wipe the whole slate clean, huh? I'll be out of here.
You're serious. All right, guys, you will go.
Huh?
You're serious.
What, the meeting's over?
We're taking it.
You were, we were already adjourned, you know, all of a sudden they're just talking.
You told me eight o'clock.
That's when I was calling.
Well, because we had a meet, first meeting.